Good evening and welcome to the August 26, 2014 meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audience, I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Mickey Price, South Point Township.
Good evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Joe Carpenter, Craters Mountain Township.
Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, this meeting's called to order. Our invocation will be delivered by Commissioner Mickey Price and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Chad Brown.
Would you pray, would you please? Our most graciously heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the many blessings you give us each and every day. Our health, our ability to come and interact with others, please be with our men and women who stand forth and fight for our freedom to come and meet in this peaceful manner that we're doing. Be with us here in the citizens of Gaston County. Give us wisdom to make decisions in their best interest and be with all of the people and keep them in good health. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
As you lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Frayley is here. The County Commissioners will take citizen comment on the following issues. One, name road change and one, two, to provide a local site development grant to Project Rainbow. Before we go into public hearing, let me outline the rules of procedure for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the Chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the Chair for response and the Chair shall rule on all points of order. At this time, do I hear a motion to go in public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We are now in public hearing. Item number one is road name changes. The Commission will take comment on renaming a portion of Outback Lane to Thomas Chaney Lane located off of Old Willis School Road. I'll ask Ms. Sarah Penley, GIS Specialist Three, to provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizen's comment will be taken. Ms. Penley?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Staff was contacted by a property owner on a portion of Outback Lane, as you noted, which is located off Old Willis School Road in Dallas Township. We're proposing that we change a portion of a road from Outback Lane to Thompson Chaney Lane. We did receive a property owner petition with 100 percent signatures for the affected area. Just to give you a brief history of this duplicate change request, if you'll look with me to the Elmo, Outback Lane was a development that had proposed this street to be connected and shown as a through street or circle. And that's how we had this listed on our GIS and for 911, based on the developer's submission. However, it was brought to our attention by one of the petitioners that this was never constructed as a through street. Therefore, we ended up with two separate segments, one public, one private, with the same road name and address accordingly. So when staff was presented with an opportunity by the property owners to make a change, we felt it was beneficial, obviously, for 911 to do so. It was stressed at the time as well that we had a third property owner who's not with us tonight that has some medical issues that require ambulance services on a regular basis. And many times, they would see the ambulance up the street and they couldn't quite get it there. So staff recommends and followed up with this support for change. As you mentioned, this subject area is located in the Dallas Township off of Old Willis School Road. We have only three property owners petitioning on the lower private segment of the roadway and only those three would be affected by any type of address change whatsoever. In lieu of a formal planning board meeting, notifications were sent out to all the planning board members and as well as TRC to ask for their input, their comments, or any objections, and none were received. And to date, staff has not received any calls for general information and/or objections to the proposed road name change. So staff would recommend that we change it from, or this lower portion of Outback Lane, just to be clear, to Thompson Chaney Lane at your recommendation. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Penley. Are there any citizens wishing to comment? Hearing none, any commission comments or questions? This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the road name change Outback Lane portion of to Thompson Chaney Lane. Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Keeger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Item number two is provide a local site development grant, Project Rainbow. Commission will take comment to provide a local site development grant to Project Rainbow of up to $300,000 to pay all or a portion of the cost of preparing the project site for the construction of the facility, the site development grant. I'll ask Mr. Donnie Hicks, EDC Director, for comments. Mr. Hicks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm joined tonight by Mr. Kobe Razner and he may want to make a few comments about the project. He is an individual I met in Israel in April of 2012. He's brought a lot of projects to the U.S. and he specifically likes North Carolina. And we want to keep him happy with North Carolina. He's brought us a project that is a very attractive proposal for both the county and the state. And it's to build roughly 100,000 square foot building, invest about 13 to 14 million dollars, and hire about 75 people at an average salary of about $38,000, which is about $5,000 a year above our average. The site is in North Belmont and I'll show you on the Elmo roughly where it is. It's on the north side of the Oaks. We started developing the Oaks property in the early 90s. This is the piece across the street from the Oaks that used to be Parkdale Mills, Number 12 and 14, if you're familiar with that area. So it's a redevelopment area. It's a project that requires rail and so our intent is to try to put them on the P&N Rail Line with a new operator. I'll let Mr. Razner talk about the cars if he feels comfortable with it, but this is the kind of key anchor that we need to make the P&N Line viable. This would give us maybe 40 to 60 percent of the number of cars that an operator would need to break even on the facility. What we're proposing to do, because it does have some unique infrastructure requirements, there's going to have to be a rail spur built and some additional grading work that goes around the collection system for the rail, that we offer the company a Level Two Grant, which is our standard grant program, but that we make $300,000 of that available to them upfront to help them with the grading cost, any costs that they might incur on this redevelopment site. If there's any proceeds of the Level Two Grant remaining after year four, depending on what they invest, if there's any money left out of that grant above the 300,000, that will be taken in annual increments, just like you normally would take the grant. What we're really trying to do is provide some upfront money to help defray the expense of developing the site. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have and if you don't have any, I'll ask Mr. Razner to come up. He felt like he wanted to speak to the Commissioners and represent the company to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I'll be brief because Donnie stole a lot of the information that I wanted to give you. But I want to introduce the company that we hope will be coming to Belmont and to your county. It's called Tosaf. It's an Israeli-based company. It's a privately-held company by a family of ex-farmers who developed into industry. So this is not some corporation that is buying and selling. This is working people, nice and decent working people. They built a very large business. They operate approximately 10 plants, three in Israel and six in Europe, from England to Germany, Turkey, various countries. And now they are making the first move to globalize themselves and create a footprint in the United States. So the first plant is a very important plant for them because this is, even though they're making very modest plans right now, which they're presenting to you, sort of putting the toes in the water, the long-term expectation is to create a very substantial business. So right now, the Phase One is to build, as Donnie said, a plant of about 100,000 square feet, even though we're looking at a lot with 21 acres, which will allow to even triple or more that size. And 75 people in 100,000 square feet, not that we can promise anything, but really the intention is to create a very substantial amount of business here. So we're going to employ a variety of people. This is not only manufacturing. We always have a serious lab that is working with us. By the way, I did not explain to you, but the business of the company is plastic compounding. Basically, they make the DNA of every plastic material. The basic plastic material needs either color or other chemical or physical characteristics that make it the chair that we sit on or whatever. So that's what they make, supply a lot of people across the world. Even they have another sister, not sister, but another Israeli company that is located in the county, US Leisure, that is one of their clients already. So we're looking forward to become good corporate citizens here and to grow. We've been looking in the Charlotte area, in the Raleigh area, and in the Atlanta area. And really, we came down to the first preference, which is here. So I hope you guys approve and we hope to come here and grow together with you guys. If you have any questions?
Thank you. I will tell you, we're open for business. So anything we can do to help, we stand ready. Are there any questions, Commissioner Brown? Or excuse me, are there any citizens wishing to comment? At this time, we'll take questions from the Commissioners. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Razner, thank you so much for coming all this way. I know it's been a big part of your week to be here, but Donnie talks highly of you and all the people you've represented and Commissioner Philbeck spotted out and said, we are open for business, but we welcome anybody you'd wish to bring here. And thank you so much for thinking about Gaston County.
Wonderful. Thank you also.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any other questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Carpenter?
I just, thank you for choosing Gaston County. I think you've made a good choice. You'll find that out because we are distance-friendly and we want to do everything we can to help make it successful for you. So thank you.
Wonderful. We've noticed that already, so Donnie and his team, and we know that that's the situation here.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Any other questions from the Board? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to authorize and appropriate 300,000 from the fund balance and award a site development grant to Project Rainbow. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. This concludes the public hearing for tonight. The Board would like to thank each of you for your input. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Our next item is agenda revision and approval. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is. Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Frayley. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of minutes, regular medium July 22, 2014, and a closed session of August 12, 2014. Motion made by Commissioner Keeger, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have no citizen signed up to speak. We move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
One second. Second?
Discussion, please.
You need a motion first.
We need a motion first. Motion made by Commissioner Keeger, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Now is any discussion? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were going back because you'd asked for the approval of the agenda, not on what items were going to be pulled off of that. And we wanted to pull one item off of that or discuss that. And I know if we can have a...
Well, now's time to discuss it.
It was item N.
Okay, but we already approved the agenda as is. So the motion before the Board is the consent agenda. So if you were going to pull an item, you'd have to do it at that time.
But that what we did was approve the agenda. We didn't ask for any items wanting to be pulled at that time, but that's all right.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as is. It was made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by, excuse me, made by Commissioner Keeger, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. All in favor? Motion, any opposed? It is five to two. Passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item, we are at appointments. We will begin with Commissioner Frayley.
I have a couple here, Mr. Chairman. Animal Control Task Force Advisory Board, Amy Pendergast. Economic Development Commission, Joel Long. Transportation Advisory Board, Charity Patterson.
Motion made by Commissioner Frayley, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Brown?
One, Mr. Chairman, for the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Reappointment for John C. Richardson.
Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Price?
Yes, sir. I have three.
The first one is to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Dixon Reed Gents, and to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Wade Leaphart, and to the Caramont Gaston Memorial Regional Hospital Board of Directors, Barry Pomeroy.
Do I hear a second? Second made by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Anna Fur, and Workforce Development Board, Jane Collins.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Carpenter?
I have two. The Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Mary Alice Brown, and Economic Development Commission, Fred Jackson.
Second made by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Commissioner Keeger?
No appointments.
Thank you, Commissioner Keeger. I have one. Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Ms. Gail Hopkins.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have two.
Three.
Three?
If one added. She didn't do here.
Yeah, it's on mine.
Down at the bottom.
Okay, yeah, there we go. We have three full board vacancies. Fireman Relief Fund, I'll say these, we can make them all in one motion. Fireman's Relief Fund trustee, Howard Tig.
That's not on mine. Mark Buchanan.
Okay, excuse me. That's what I have on mine. I've got it. Scratch that. The motion will be made that Fireman's Relief Fund trustees appoint Mark Buchanan, Fireman's Relief Fund trustees Harold Paul Bright, and the planning board, Mr. Mark Holler, is recommended by the Board of Education, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we have committee reports. Commissioner Frayley?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and use it now while I have the floor. I'm just going to go ahead and go back to this. We didn't get the proper approval on this board agenda tonight. We were trying to pull back on item N. We wanted to pull that for items of discussion. Me and Commissioner Price had raised our hand to pull an item, but back to that, I just wanted to let it be known to where we're going with this, from the manager to the department heads, that as we move through these things, we're looking at items to be put on these things for approval that are well above exorbitant amounts of what, we could have bought three items for what was purchased for one item tonight. And just wanted to let that be known, that that'd be recognized. And I'd like to have the manager, have them send more detailed information when they send those information over from this point as we get to that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mather. I'll also look, I think we pull that under the agenda revision. I may, excuse me. Mr. Brown, I will go back and look. I think when we pull items, we do that under agenda revision. I may have just had a slip. If I did, I do apologize for that, but we'll go back and check just to make sure. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioner Price?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On July 23, I attended the Gaston Family Health Service meeting. Highlights of that meeting, there was Gaston Family Health Service was going to be a major participant in a health fair that was to be held on August night. And we'll get a report tomorrow night about how the success of that win. It was to be held at the Family Christian Center on Lynnwood Road. Also, I'd like to thank Caramont Health for 500 backpacks to our local school system for the children of need. That would be a well-received item. Also, it was noted in our meeting that the federal government has set aside $100 million and this is to be allocated for new public health system, new sites across the country. Gaston Family is looking at Cleveland County, Mecklenburg County, and Burke County as possible opening sponsorship of new sites. I also want to let you know that the transition for the children's health that transferred from the Health Department to Gaston Family, that process went smoothly. The patients, the transfer has been seamless to them. No issues have arisen. Also, on the PACE program, which is where the old Circuit City used to be, the senior adult care, we have an enrollment of up to 50 patients now and we're seeing an average of about six new enrollees per month becoming patients there. Also, attended the Gaston County Department Health and Human Services Board meeting this week, last week, I'm sorry. We have in the public health side, lapse salaries of $106,258 and in the social services side, lapse salaries of about $89,921. And that together, and almost ending July 31, is well above their yearly projection of lapse salary. So they are in the process of hiring. Director Dobbins has made it a personal issue of his that no person gets hired or no position filled without looking at that position to see if it is absolutely needed or it can be converted to something new or transition to an additional part of an existing position. Very received, good news there. The, we received an update on Ebola, just as precautionary measures of what the county is doing and going through. Really nothing unusual, just our feet to the fire, keeping everybody informed about mainly just hand washing and travel, if anybody travels in and out of Africa. There's going to be a town hall meeting on healthy eating, active living, August 28, which is this week. It's at the Tabernacle Baptist Church Family Life Center on 19th Avenue here in Gastonia. Those were the highlights of the meeting and I believe that's all I have. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any more work on the DHS HS Board? Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to announce this morning, the highly anticipated, highly publicized groundbreaking for the pediatric ED happened. So we're pretty excited about that. Got a lot of press attention today. Appreciate Commissioner Carpenter and our county manager making it out to that groundbreaking. Appreciate you guys coming and supporting the hospital. We're really excited about that and I think Mr. Dobbins was there as well. So we're really excited about that. If you have to go to the emergency room, if you have to go to the hospital, just be sure to kind of follow the signs. They're having to change some things, so just be cognizant of some parking changes if you do have to use the emergency room at the hospital. The other thing with Caramont, we're excited to announce the Caramont Institute, which is something new, where we're bringing on community leaders into the organization, sort of a spinoff on kind of what the Chamber does, the Leadership Gaston, where we're getting people integrated with our organization and teaching them what we do at Caramont. And our inaugural class was announced last week and we are fortunate and honored to have Mr. W. Jeffrey Booker on that list. So we're excited that he is a part of it and going to learn more about the organization. So also, I wanted to point out, speaking of Mr. Booker, I wanted to commend you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate all you did. We voted tonight on the school funding issue, where we allocated a little more money. We recognize that doesn't really fix all the problems, but I appreciate your work as chairman, Commissioner Carpenter as the vice chair, and Mr. Mather is really working hard to make that happen and working to try to find a solution to, at least try to come up with some sort of reasonable compromise so we could get past some of that. So I appreciate what the schools did and working with us and your leadership in making that happen. Finally, I'm pumped about this weekend, the start of college football. So go Vols. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Carpenter?
Not any one of our particular Commissions and some things might be left unsaid, but it's been bothering me since Commissioner Price and I visited the Mountain Island Riverbend steam plant, which Duke was closing down and they invited us to go over and look at it. And what we saw was a real good plan to deal with what they call coal ash. It is not classified, I've been reading on it, and it's not classified as a toxic material. But every time you see it on the news, they refer to it as a toxic material. And if you concentrate enough of any one of the elements in there, I suppose it could be. But I think about it in terms of every time I turn on a light bulb or air conditioning or some electric, we're going to be paying for that and they're talking about moving it. And I calculated today, if you move 100,000 tons, 20 tons per load, that's going to be 5,000 loads. If you're doing it to the airport, round trip is 26 miles and I figured 10 gallons to a mile. and I figured 10 gallons to a mile, that's 13,000 gallons of diesel fuel they're gonna burn, not counting the damage to the road. Duke had a plan in place. It was approved by EPA and Dena and everybody to encapsulate that there. And now the legislators have got mixed up into it as a political issue. And I think the citizens need to take a real close look at that. There's not anything scientific about what they're saying has happened. They've monitored the groundwater over there for years. When Mickey and Commissioner Price and I looked at it, we saw where it went into a pond, and the water settled out of it and went through a channel, and it went into another. They tested it. We saw duck, we saw fish swimming in the water, we saw turtles, geese, everything in that second pond. There was nothing harming them, and none of them had two heads, you know, that, anything wrong with them. But I think it's something that needs to be called to the attention of the people because I call them extreme environmentalists, think that there's something wrong. I've even studied the Dan River accident. They haven't found one dead fish. The water coming down the river now has the same amount of elements as the one going out. And so, I think some reason, scientific reason, needs to be brought to that. I don't see anything wrong with them encapsulating that coal ash over there where it is. So, I just wanted to bring that out. And, you know, it's not something that you normally would say, but I just think that it's gotten way out of perspective of what's dangerous. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. You may be confusing us with facts. Commissioner Keger.
You know how Joe busts my chops from time to time?
Yeah.
He sure took a long time to have no reports, I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
All right. I, too, am on the Health Board and the Human Service Board. And I just wanted to pick out a couple of things Mickey didn't mention. Early, this is early in our fiscal year, that the lapsed salaries in the Health Division, there's over $100,000, I think it was $106,000. And just that $90,000 in the Social Service end from lapsed salaries. So, you know, that hits on what Mickey was referencing with regards to taking a look at these jobs if they are needed. But kudos for that. Parks and Recreation, we did distribute, and we do, I have it available if you want it, the Phase 1 enlargement process for the Dallas Park. And I'm trying to go fast, 'cause Joe's gonna say something when I'm through, I know.
Yeah, I'm all right.
Just wanted to point out, between the first weekend in January through the last weekend in July, every, I won't say every, almost every field in the county was utilized for tournament play. And that's available to y'all. It shows what groups rented the fields and what the success was. And I will point out that at the Parks meeting Monday, they did send out the little brochures for the Stanley Massacre. Those enrollment forms are available now at the Parks and Rec, and I'm sure you can get them through Stanley. Gaston College, we met last night. And Duke eventually will be coming to this board for a land easement issue between the college and the tech park. And that's something we'll deal with at a later date. But the trustees did go ahead and vote to approve it and send it on last night. We had, I was sworn in as a reappointed member along with Alan Kloniger and two new board members, one appointed by the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and the Gaston County School District appointed Jennifer Davis. Okay. And so, we were all sworn in. And there is a real exciting program that's being instituted at the college. It's called Spark III, and it's to the third power for three different areas of study. But a lot of people aren't aware that there will be 15 full-time associate of science students getting scholarships from $1,000 to $5,600 a year. Every year, they'll be getting that now. So, parents that are interested or students, you have to be a full-time student working towards the associate degree in science. And there's certain criteria, of course, regarding grades and experience. And we have adopted a strategic enrollment management plan, which is just a long phrase of saying it's just like an economic development plan, but to recruit students. And I'll, oh, one other thing. Mr. Carpenter and I went up to Asheville for a conference, and Buncombe County hosted us a dinner. And I know every year, we put an annual report for the citizens in the local newspaper. But they have a wonderful brochure. Well, it's actually about 25 pages. It has little blips about every department in the county, even highlights the commissioners. And on the back, it's a phone number for every vital area of county business. So, I'm gonna pass this on to the manager. Maybe this is something we could utilize. I don't mind us having to spend a few more dollars if we can get good information out to the citizens for them to be able to contact whoever and whatever they need. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Keger. I have a couple reports. The first one, I want to make the board aware and the public that the Dallas courthouse, they're having tentatively, as of right now, ribbon-cutting ceremony, introducing the greater Gaston community to the refurbished structure on Sunday, November the 16th. It's gonna be a pretty big event, and would like to invite the board and the public to that. Also, I attended the North Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority Board. We have about an hour's board development and Sharon Decker and, under deposition, things of that nature from the Department of Commerce. And one of the, well, the main issue that they talked about was site, how they choose sites in Gaston County. What is, what do companies really, excuse me, what do companies look for across North Carolina? And they had different statistics. And I was really surprised, most of the time, when you think of, okay, what brings a company to a specific area, you'd probably say, okay, the land and some tax incentive or tax base, or how high the tax rate is or low. But the absolute number one thing, 100% of the time, it was the only item that was 100% of the time, was a skilled workforce. More than incentives, more than any type of grant, land, or anything. Because the cost, when you don't have a skilled workforce, is absolutely tremendous. So, I think it's something we talk about. It's one of those things you kind of know, but it's just a big deal when the heavy hitters come in and actually can show you the statistics and the data to back that up. So, I do think as we go forward, we need to really look at that. I know Commissioner Keger serves Gaston College, have advanced manufacturing facility there. And we probably need to do a little bit more in that area to make sure that we have skilled workers. 100% of the time, that was the number one criteria. And what these companies are doing is they're actually sending a form. And you fill out that form, and they'll do demographics before they'll even come out. If you do not meet that criteria, they're not even coming out. So, a lot of this stuff is already done before they even come out. And if you lose on the front end, you're never even gonna get an opportunity. So, I do think as we move forward, economic development, we have to have that on our minds as we discuss bringing companies to Gaston County. I think Commissioner Carpenter.
Let me add something to that. I served on the college foundation board. And as you know, the advanced manufacturing facility that we want to build, well, the four building has been expanded. I think they about finished there. But the new building, we committed the rest of the bond money that was left over for them. They've got a, I think it's over a million-dollar EDA grant. They've got, I think, $500,000 that we got, helped them get with the Golden Leaf. And there's still a little gap in there. And our foundation board voted this last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, to participate in a plan to help get the rest of the money to build that. So, they're able to proceed with starting that facility. And this will produce those workers, that workforce that you're talking about, that they can fill those jobs. So, we are moving.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. This time, county managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief tonight. I think you all received my rather lengthy written report a couple of weeks ago, so I won't belabor any of those items. But I would like to mention a couple of things. And I think under the good news category, it's worth mentioning that three of our local ninth graders, Katie Davis, Mary Hunter Russell, and Grace Wine Coop, received the President's Environmental Youth Award for their Pollution Solutions team. And they were among only 60 kids in their age group across the nation to get this award. So, that's quite an honor. Couple of things with respect to our financial condition and budget. We are doing quite well at this particular juncture in the fiscal year. And some of that is attributable to lapsed salaries and I think probably a pretty frugal attitude amongst our staff in general. But, you know, I will say, and certainly, you know, Health and Social Service is by far our largest department, so you're gonna see a lot there. But you'll see the same in other departments. And probably scrutinizing positions as they do become vacant is a practice that I think we see across county government. And that indeed is a good practice. But lapsed salaries can also be a double-edged sword. And sometimes it can be attributable to the fact that we're having difficulty attracting new talent or we're losing good talent more quickly than we can attract new people to fill those positions. So, that's a caution with regard to lapsed salaries. But in general, we're doing very well, you know, financially at this particular time. And then I also wanted to mention that the priority-based budget process is going well to date. And, you know, we recently began the process of doing our program definitions, and that will be completed in the not-too-distant future. Hopefully, to have something for your review within, well, I'll say within the next month or two. But you'll be able to validate those, will want to get your concurrence. And then we'll, of course, move forward with peer review and prioritization. So, that process, I believe, is going well, and people seem to be embracing the concept. So, that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. County attorney report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to announce for the board that KRM, the parent company of Dixon Vow that located a manufacturing facility in our tech park last year, has exercised its option to acquire another parcel in the tech park adjacent to their current plant. We don't have any definite plans yet for them, but hopefully, we'll have some type of announcement in the near future. And I needed a quick closed session with the board to discuss two items, please.
Commissioner Price had a question?
Yes. Part of our Health and Human Services meeting, we had a one-page handout and a very brief report on the caseload concerning child services and foster care. I don't, I think it would be informative to have that in a work session for the rest of the board to hear, to just know what's going on in that particular department of foster children, what's happening. Because as you'll see in the report, the social workers are at their limit on caseloads and above the state average. But if it's the pleasure of the board, it may take 15 minutes. But after we heard the report, the questions ended up taking longer than the report did. But that was just from our board asking questions about that. If you'd like, Mr. Dobbins could either present it, or the attorney for the board presented it at our meeting. But I think it would be informative for the rest of you to hear, if you want to do it.
Donna, if you can get with Commissioner Price and if we can schedule that for the September work session, unless I hear you differ from the board. Okay? Commissioner Price, Commissioner Carpenter had one more?
Yeah, before we go into a closed session, at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners meeting last week in Asheville, we were able to get Mr. Tom Keger elected as our district director. It's an eight-county area, I think, one commissioner is appointed from. But he will be able to sit on that board and take issues that we have and hopefully network with people all over this state to get any, you know, any issues that we have with the legislature or even with Congress that might be important to us. So, I want to congratulate Tom on being elected to serve there.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Congratulations, Commissioner Keger.
And to add to that, and I might not have the numbers correct, but there are 17 district directors in the state. And the president of the association has several at-large appointments to that. And we have a good chance of having Mr. Carpenter appointed, so we'd have two out of 20 people in the whole state on that thing. That was the logic in trying to help Gaston County a little more.
Okay. Thanks to both of you.
And I don't know if y'all got the note, but David Thompson, our executive director, is leaving, and he is taking a job with NATO in Washington.
One more thing, we'll go into closed session. I forgot, and this is extremely important, committee report. Got an email from Commissioner Frayley challenging the commission to the ALS ice bucket challenge. I hope next work session, I can give that to Ms. Donna. We can play that and maybe, hopefully have a challenge of our own. So, I just wanted to let you know that Commissioner Frayley, it's on.
I did it. And if you don't do it, you may need to bring your wallets with you. Of course, you need to do that anyway.
That's right.
Motion to go into closed session.
Well, I have to state it. This time, the next handle is closed session. Do I hear a motion to enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A3 to consult with their attorney?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Frayley, executed by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. This time, do I hear a motion to re-enter open session?
Yep.
Motion made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? We're now in open session. There is no action to be taken as a result of the closed session. This concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next work session is September the 9th. Our next regular meeting is September 23rd at 6:00 PM at the Harley B. Gaston Engineering Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Spectacular Buff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. This time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.